Alrighty, good evening. I am calling this meeting to order at 7:02. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alrighty, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first school committee meeting of the school year. Welcome back, school committee members. It is great to be back and to see everyone's faces. I hope the students in front of us and those watching at home had a delightful first day of school yesterday, right? Alright, my goodness. Team, I just want to remind, if you would like to speak, please sign in on the clipboard. That way, you don't have to state your name and address at the beginning of your speech. That way, you have a full four minutes. Veronica, is that accurate? Awesome, so feel free to pass the clipboard around, and we can get started. Awesome. For starters, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 2nd? Do I have a second? Next up? Well, before, before starting, I'd just like to, to say one, one quick thing. Nothing excites me more than seeing this room filled of our youth. I taught for seven long years. I am now an administrator at Excel Academy High School over in East Boston, and I just want to share that my heart warms up and smiles whenever I hear students speak and advocate for what they want. Whether the team members here agree or not, we value each and every one of your voice, and together collectively, we will work together to make all of your experiences at the high school, middle school, or elementary school a wonderful school year. And so I just wanted to start with that. But now, I will kick it over to our superintendent, Dr. Amio Beata, to present an award for tonight.
Great, I am so excited to present this award. And first of all, I want to say welcome to all of our students and staff that are here tonight. We love to see our students here. Tonight, I do get the honor of honoring one educator who has been dedicated to Chelsea Public Schools for many years. And so every year, for the, this is our third year doing what we call the Butterfly Award. And so this year's awardee and winner of the Butterfly Award is Emmanuel or Manny Crespo. The Butterfly Award is given by the family of Carolyn Arndt in memory each year to a teacher who exemplifies the qualities and attributes that Carolyn brought to her professional practice, namely creative ideas, innovative instructional practices, and strong support of her colleagues. Carolyn Arndt exemplified the Chelsea Public Schools motto, "We welcome and we educate." Throughout her professional career, Carolyn believed in creating a welcoming, safe, and nurturing environment for her students. Carolyn was a creative teacher, one who took initiative, and as a result, brought joy to students in her classroom and the school. Carolyn was a nature enthusiast and integrated her passion into her work. She initiated the idea of a butterfly garden at the Mary C. Burke Complex, hence the name of her award. The contributions Carolyn made to her students and to the Chelsea Schools community made a difference. And those who knew Carolyn knew this to be true. And like the butterfly effect Carolyn had and continues to have a positive impact on all. So for this year's award, it is with great pleasure that I present the 2022 Butterfly Award to Emmanuel Manny Crespo of the George F. Kennedy Elementary School. So Manny, if you could stand, and then I'll hand you the award after I read it.
Dr. Beata, can I quickly say something? Mr. Crespo was also my teacher back in the day, so lots of love for Mr. Crespo.
So, so I'm going to read a little bit about you, Mr. Crespo. So, Mr. Crespo is a father to four children, a stepdad to two, and a grandfather to six, and assures that he and his loving wife spend time with all of them, whether it be cruising around the world or spending vacation time at their timeshare. He is an avid reader and lifelong learner who is always trying to better himself, both as a professional and as a man. During the pandemic, Mr. Crespo dedicated himself to figuring out how to use technology to create engaging and worthwhile physical education lessons over a virtual platform. It is, it may be no coincidence that Mr. Crespo started his Chelsea Public Schools teaching career in 1996, the first year that the Mary C. Burke Complex and the Kelly School opened its doors. It is almost as if Mr. Crespo was part of the architectural design of the building as he has truly become a fixture in the Kelly community. A Chelsea resident in his 27th year of teaching for the Chelsea Public Schools, Mr. Crespo approaches his, his job at the Kelly School physical education teacher with the vigor and vim of a first-year teacher, combined with the wisdom experience of someone who has taught in four separate decades. One only needs to observe the first and last five minutes of each of his classes to know his worth. Upon entry to the gymnasium, one can feel the excitement of every student lined up, ready to enter. Students are smiling and well-behaved, ready to maximize their time in the gym. Students have become accustomed to Mr. Crespo's ability to create engaging learning experiences that truly excite them. As each class wraps up, every student is sweating and happy while most take on leadership roles, engaging in cleanup or cool-down routines. But between the beginning and the end of each class is where the magic happens. Whether it be engaging in the annual jump rope for heart, challenge to raise funds for the American Heart Association, or a game that Mr. Crespo invented to apply specific skills that might not be so exciting when taught in isolation, his class is consistently accessible to all students through an inter- intentional approach to planning to ensure that each student's individual needs are met. Mr. Crespo's dedication to the students and families of Chelsea does not live within the bowels of the school day. He is a fixture of both commu- at both family events at the school and the district, as well as numerous community events. He supported Chelsea families during the pandemic by volunteering regularly to distribute food and medical supplies. He is an ordained minister and chose education as a career so that he could give back to his community. As a result, Mr. Crespo cannot walk the streets of Chelsea without running into a familiar face. Of course, this is not a surprise as Mr. Mr. Crespo has served over 12,000 students during his time in Chelsea Public Schools. Mr. Crespo is a positive contributor to the school climate and is willing to lend a hand to any of his colleagues in need. He is respected by all who know him, and we are so blessed to have him on our team. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Crespo on this.
I mean, wow. I've only been in the field for seven years. I don't think I've reached that many. So, thank you so much for everything that you've done. I'm actually texting your daughter now. She wishes you so many congratulations. It will be an abrazo when she sees you. Alrighty, team, next up on our agenda is the public comment. If you did sign in, again, feel free to come up to the mic, and you have four minutes to speak.
My name is Alana Asher. I'm a history teacher at Chelsea High School for over 15 years. I would first like to acknowledge the youth that are here tonight and how they inspire me every day at CHS. My students last year expressed many concerns with the E policy, and they did share their concerns in multiple meetings. And sadly, there has been no change this school year to the E and attendance policy. The E policy is a get-tough mandate and does little to reduce absences or truancy. I had a student that would skip the last two classes about five times each quarter. This included my class. So the student would do enough work to get around a 60, but not any higher. Why? She said it didn't matter. Her grade would automatically drop to a 60. Sadly, she was right, and that is exactly what she got. Now, I did contact her mom, the dean, her school counselor, and social worker, and the skipping did not diminish. Attendance Work, an organization that is supported by DESI, states that the coding of absences, as excused and unexcused, can be arbitrary and biased. Absences are generally considered excused only if they fall within a narrow band of reasons in many districts. A student who has a note from a doctor or a parent receives an excused absence. While a peer who lacks access to a doctor or lives with a parent unable to write a note in English receives an unexcused absence. Comparing the proportion of absences that are considered excused/unexcused for different student populations helps reveal biases that cause students in poverty and from racial minorities to have a higher rate of truancy. I had a student that had only three unexcused absences for quarter three and quarter four. No excused absences. And instead of the B that she earned, both quarter three and quarter four, she received a 60 for my class last year. Is this fair that the student showed complete mastery of my class and her grade and GPA drops this drastically due to only being absent six days in a 90-day schedule because of the E policy? The current attendance policy on page 18 that you have been given says students can buy back their grade any quarter. But reading further, it says that in semester classes, they cannot buy back the grade quarter two and quarter four. So why does the attendance poly- policy say these two different things? Listening to my students last year about attendance, they told me it was difficult for them to figure out how to find if they had three or more unexcused absences in quarter two, three, or four. They showed their view in Aspen to me, and I struggled on how I could track their excused or unexcused absences for a specific quarter. The current attendance policy is pushing for parents to use the Google form to alert the school when a student is absent. As of right now, the form is only in Spanish and English, and this is true for the student handbook. I found that Malden and Revere's attendance policy is translated into many more multiple languages. It also states on page 18 and 20 that parents and guardians can appeal to the attendance appeal board, but it just says for them to contact the attendance office. Students, raise your hand if you knew last year that your families could appeal any attendance issue to a board. Do we even know who is on that attendance board? I don't. And how to contact them? I don't. As a teacher, it is not clear what I'm supposed to do if a student is with the support staff for the entire period or comes back with just a few minutes left without a note. Sometimes, they come with a note, and there's no other explanation. Sometimes, not a time. What am I supposed to do concerning marking them present or absent in these cases? Additionally, Boston, Revere, and Malden do not automatically lower students' grades because of unexcused absences. They also have a system in place to talk to students and families before they become chronic. Revere said this July at a school board meeting that they need to rethink at automatically failing students in their classes. And Boston also has adjusted their policy of lowering students' grades because of absences. Manitoga District in Minnesota states, "We need to show that we care about students and their attendance." In Minnesota, we're not eliminating consequences for absences and tardiness, but rather finding the right consequences. Under their school's new policy, when a student misses a single class within 36 hours, a staff member meets with the students to inquire about the absence. Every unexcused absence results in after-school detention. The response of students showed that they take these consequences more seriously than they took a change in their grades. In the words of one last year, "I could skip, and nobody cared." This year, if I skip once, I'm taken to the woodshed. This is the type of action that we should be taking at CHS. I would like to acknowledge that the district has done a lot to help students be successful in the classroom and support student voice. They have added an echo with the officer who is here tonight. Suspension rates are, have been much lower. Educators like myself now use Remind to text families and students on a regular basis, to just name a few things. I am now asking the school board members to revisit the attendance policy, and this includes the E policy. I'm not asking for you to get rid of it, but to make it more flexible, equitable, and come up with alternative consequences for students. Many states and districts like Manitoba are leading the charge of having mental health days be excused and reforming their attendance policies. Our students deserve the best, and this attendance policy is no longer equitable or fair for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Asher. Up next?
Hey, everyone. My name is Sean Perez. I'm currently a junior, and I attend Chelsea High School. I'd like to talk about my sophomore year as it was the hardest year I have possibly been through. I struggled with my mental health, which caused me to struggle in school, which also led me, you know, led me to being affected by the E policy. And it was my biggest fear considering I knew what it could do to my GPA. I heard that it could literally bring it down from a four to like a one or two, and I didn't want that. I ended up getting frustrated. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't able to. I ended up getting one, and I wasn't able to appeal it because I didn't know how to or they didn't, you know, they didn't give enough information about the policy. And I couldn't excuse the absences I had already received, and I knew it was over for me. I couldn't get rid of that E, and it just made me borderline stressed out. With social, with, which also contributed to my mental health and, you know, just led me down a very dark path. However, the school did get rid of it because of the lack enforcement of the E policy, which I got very lucky, even though I still struggled to get doctor notes to excuse my, my later absences throughout the year. I do believe that the E policy should cover students that have mental health problems. As through my experience, it was very hard for me to attend school. Even when I did, it was very hard for me to even do my work because, one, I would always doze off and, you know, thoughts would get better, the thoughts would get better, thoughts would get the better of me. And, well, I just wasn't able to do my work. And I wasn't able to concentrate to my full extent, showing, you know, my true, showing my true effort in my schoolwork. I needed some time off of school. That way, I could do my schoolwork and actually concentrate. But, you know, school didn't really take fond of that, so I ended up getting an E, even though they revoked it. No student should be punished due to them having mental health problems. It's a serious issue nowadays since, you know, quarantine is over and everyone's coming back to school and, you know, a lot of people are having mental health issues. And I think the policy should really cover kids with mental health problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You have four minutes to speak.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Javin Diaz. I'm a junior at Chelsea High School. And I'd like to describe my experience with the E policy as a roller coaster because you'll never know what you'll expect. My personal experience with the E policy started my sophomore year in the first quarter when I had received my report card, and that was the first time I was notified that I had received an E. My teacher did not tell me. I, I was unsure of how many unexcused absences we were supposed to have. So I received an E on that report card, but it may be removed due to the fact that the decision on it was not made yet. Me personally, I thought that was wrong because I'm not getting a definitive answer, and I'm left with questions. I had went to the Chelsea High website to see if there was information on there as well on the E policy. There was not. My counselor had also said that for full-year classes, you will not receive any Es for quarter two, but could for quarter three if you have two unexcused absences. So there, you could see that it's inconsistent. Sometimes, we're told three unexcused absences. Sometimes, we're told two. And it's from different people in power at our school. So you don't know really who to trust. The policy just creates confusion, in my opinion, especially when the information is inconsistent. I think that the educators and administrative staff needs to come together and have an agreement on how many absences there are, what's the criteria for it, and if they should even continue doing it or change it so that there's a structured system so we can look at our unexcused absences, we can look at our E, see if we can fix it, and not just buy it back. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. You have four minutes.
Okay, thank you. I will be speaking on behalf of one of the students who couldn't attend, unfortunately. Hello, my name is Bella Chavez. I am a junior at Chelsea High. I was affected by the E policy because I was late to school a couple of times due to personal reasons. I attempted to appeal the E, but I was uncomfortable to speak with the attendance officer. When I spoke to the attendance officer, he wasn't comprehensive on my situation and did not rece- did not dis- on my situation and decided not to remove my E. I was, I wasn't able to do anything in the situation since he was the only one who had the power to remove that E. Also, Chelsea High has no clear ways on appealing the E, so I was unable to do so in time. There was no information anywhere I could find. It was very difficult to make an appointment with the attendance officer because of this issue. My grades were dropped, my GPA dropped. This is something I'm unable to make up, and I ask for your help to fix this issue. Please, listen to us.
And then, my testimony is, my name is Carolise Figaroa. I am a Chelsea High student in 11th grade, and I am a junior ambassador at the Chelsea Black Community. My experience with the E policy was very negative. I took, it took a huge toll on my mental health and GPA. It really harmed me and discouraged me from trying my hardest in my classes because I was sick, sick with COVID twice in that year. In addition, I missed school because of medical reasons, and I got an E. I had appointments with my social worker and therapist inside school, and I'd still get marked absent by my teacher, which resulted in an E. Due to personal reasons, I wasn't able to talk to the attendance officer. I wasn't aware or notified that my E, about my Es until the final quarter. By this time, it was too late to appeal. My life was very affected by the E policy. It made me severely depressed, and it put, I isolated myself from my friends, my family. I was so worried about disappointing the only person that I care about in this room, my grandmother. And I really, I really was afraid of becoming a failure because of the E policy. I wasn't happy, I wasn't eating, I was very, very depressed, and my mental health was on a decline. And I felt like I wasn't going to be supported by the attendance officer. On top of this, my teachers weren't able to check my Es or help me out in any way because they didn't know what to do either. This will increase the commu- we are trying to increase the communication between faculty and the school, in the school and prevent the situations like mine. Please hear my story, and please try to understand my perspective and what I was going through at the time. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here on the behalf of my granddaughter. But not just my granddaughter. All these students in this room and at the high school deserve to be heard. And I am very sympathetic to what they're going through because I know they've had a rough time during COVID. The pandemic has set a mental health crisis with the youth that are extremely high. But I want to start off by saying, again, I'm here on her behalf. I've lived in Chelsea most of my life. I watch the Mary C. Burke get torn down. I watched a new school get built. Her mother was one of the first students in 1996 at the new complex. She did well. Attendance was a big problem, but as parents, never was informed about it. I didn't know about the E policy. I'm part of the Chelsea Black Community and an active, active member in this community. My granddaughter has suffered tremendously with this new policy that I just recently found out about after months of seeing my granddaughter severely depressed. I never understood why she isolated herself from me. It was very upsetting that no one notified me of her absences. No one notified me that she was struggling in school. It's bothering me to the point where I'm confused of why this E policy even exists. But mostly, I'm furious. Because there's no communication from the school system. About how to proceed when they are in quarantine of COVID. When they do have a mental health crisis and they might have to go to the hospital for a week or two. It affects their grades because of their attendance. But if they come back and do their work. How could that be a, a, a fair balance? And, and that's what I want to understand. I'm afraid of her, of what her future might look like, you know, um, going forward. I'm a, starting to see her come out of her depressions, but she goes in and out of it. Because if she goes to mental health counseling, she gets marked absent. How do we find a way to revise this policy? There's gotta be a better way that these children could get better, fair treatment. They shouldn't be penalized. For quarantine, you know, for COVID. What do they do? Come to COVID with the, the test? Or do they come to school affected with COVID and give it to everyone else? I mean, we have to find a better, we can do better, Chelsea. Other, um, systems are in place in other communities that are accommodating their students. We should step up and do the same. As a community member, I call for the revision of this policy to cover mental health. Proper communication with parents and guardians and easier access to my granddaughter's attendance. Thank you.
Good evening. You have four minutes.
Um, hello, good evening. My name is Raina Marrera. I am a junior at Chelsea High School. In the school year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, COVID was still an issue at Chelsea, Chelsea Public Schools. However, we had an unorganized attendance policy that was implemented. In the beginning of the school year, I tested positive for COVID nineteen, therefore I couldn't go to school for five days. With the lack of information being spread about the E policy, I got an E for my first quarter. My GPA was a three point five and it went down to a zero point six. For my freshman year, I had already done bad because of. We were online and I felt like, sorry. I felt like, I, I felt trapped and then starting with the school with the zero point six GPA. Made me feel like I, I had to accept what happened. Eventually, it was fixed up, but it could have been prevented. I didn't know that we had an attendance counselor, but nobody told me that. The school and my teachers knew that I had COVID. Since the school was aware that I had COVID, why did I end up? With an E. By me getting an E, it shows how disorganized this system is. It proves that this system is just hurting students like me who have no control over this virus. This impacted my motivation to continue attending classes because I knew it was pointless. All my hard work went down the drain because of this policy. It's about time we changed this policy. Listen to us because we're fed up. Thank you.
Good evening. You have four minutes.
Um, I'm gonna be reading two testimonies. One is from my cousin. During my time in Chelsea High School, I realized how important mental health is. I've been surrounded by people who don't believe in mental health, who ignore it and who hate on people who struggle with it. I would about, I would miss about one day per week and it added up. I ended up with a lot of absences and it affected my grade tremendously. I could, I could say that not coming to school is not because I'm lazy, but because of lack of motivation and needing extra time to myself. I had always had permission to stay home by my guardian as well. He was very much, um, informed about my mental health. This is why we should change the E policy completely to cover mental health as a reason for us students to miss class. Thank you for your time.
My name is Valerie Ramirez. I'm a sophomore attending Chelsea High School. One of the many things that has affected me during my time in CHS is E policy. I've always had a problem with my mental health. There's points in my school day usually about midweek where I feel mentally drained. Due to the fact that, due to that, I don't go to one of my classes to give me a break. I prioritize my mental health and the Chelsea High School administrator showed me that I shouldn't have. By prioritizing my mental health, I had two E's my first quarter of high school. I had always been a good student, just not a mentally stable one. This brought my GPA down and it made me upset. I then asked many people how to get rid of these E's. I was told to have my parents write me a note. I'm not very open about my mental health as it is something that is very personal to me. So when my mom was writing the note, I didn't want her to say anything about my mental health history. Because I was afraid the school would make me miss class to see a social worker. So when, so I went to my guidance counselor who was very understanding of everything. He told me to just talk to my teachers and have him sign it. The teacher was also very understanding. With this whole process that took me about two weeks to fully appeal my E's, it was successful. It brought my GPA back up to an above four point oh GPA. What I want out of this is a system where I don't feel like my mental health is a burden. A system that makes me feel comfortable enough to share personal stuff to me. A system where I don't need to spend two weeks wondering what my grade is. A system that is overall good for my mental health and my education. My name is Valerie Ramirez. I'm a sophomore attending Chelsea High School and I have been negatively affected by the E policy. Thank you.
Good evening. You may begin four minutes.
Um, hello, my name is Charlene and I go to Chelsea High School. I'm a tenth grader and I'm here today because I disagree with the E policy that has been enforced at my school. Uh, I spent my freshman year when I wasn't very comfortable with the new environment. Coming back from the pandemic, I didn't start with a group of friends or my way around the building, making sure I was safe at all times. I got very lonely and depressed right when the E policy was introduced. When the school found out about my absences that was caused by my mental health, I was very nervous because I didn't, because I knew that it would affect me in school and at home. I didn't know where to go or who to ask for help since I was very new and afraid. I didn't know how to explain my issue from just a doctor or parent's note to excuse my absences. If, it affected my school year a lot with stress and anxiety, sorry. Um, it affected my school year a lot with stress and anxiety. It would have, it would mean a lot to me. And upcoming students, if we made the rules more flexible so that the problem like this wouldn't happen again to students who deserved the grade that they worked for. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniela Montanaro. I am a junior at Chelsea High School. The E policy ma- it makes students try less harder. If you realize that you have more than two absences, then there is no purpose in trying to get better grades. As the grade will change into an E by the end of the quarter. This policy mainly affected me in the last quarter of my sophomore year as I was having mental health issues as well as physical issues. Which resulted in me missing over four days of school. Even though I was caught up in all my work, I even tried to appeal my absences, which didn't work. I wasn't able to excuse all my absences, which resulted in my grade going from an, from a B to an E. Even though my hard work, even through my hard work and getting most of my absence excused, it wasn't enough. This policy has dropped my GPA. I do not find it to be fair at all because I have worked extremely hard for my grades. But this is, this policy makes it seem like my work is not value, valued, valued. Like why put in the effort if you, if it's not gonna benefit me in the future? My future education is important to me, which is why I fear that colleges may think I intentionally didn't put effort in, in my classes, which is not the case. Ask any of my teachers, they will tell you the truth. As someone who, who struggles with mental health, my mental health shouldn't be taken out against me. I find my mental health very important to me. No other student should have to go through the choice of, of choosing school over their mental health. This policy has made my anxieties oppression worse. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Isis Henderson. I'm a current junior at CHS. Um, I worked hard all quarter to get the work done while being outside the classroom, still working hard to keep up and turn in the work. So me doing the work and earning a grade for it as if I didn't do it. Is just unfair. It shouldn't matter when or where the work is done. It should matter how much I've learned. So please grade me on my actual work performance. In quarter four, I wasn't, I wasn't able to appeal the E. It had been too late to mention it to someone higher authority to fix it with this. I made, it made me feel like all my hard, hard work had gone to waste. All my stress and motivation basically went straight to nothing, a waste of time. Um, in other quarters, I had other situations going on outside of school. Um, and there were times where I was late for my first and second class, but I was told by the main office that it would be excused and it wasn't. Um, I didn't know who to check in with at all, so. Um, yeah, and if it was at the end of the school year, I don't know how I would get my absence excused. So work with us. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Josue. I'm a junior at Chelsea High. The E policy has affected me in a way where my completed assignments have gone to waste. Only because our school system only gives us three excused absences. Which is completely ridiculous because it doesn't take three days to magically get better from sickness, injury, or just any traumatic or family problems. My personal experience with the E policy is that when I received an E, I found no reason to put any effort into my work. Because my grade couldn't change for the better and that's why the E policy should not be allowed to be used as disciplinary action. For having unexcused absences because our community is still trying to recover from past years. That affected youth in poor ways regarding mental health. And on top of that. We don't need a policy that takes the incentive of learning from our youth. That's why we have to change this ridiculous policy because if we want a brighter future for our youth today, then we must get rid of the E policy.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angelie Romero. And I am a senior at Chelsea High School and since the beginning of the high, of my high school life, I went over the policy. With my attend, with the attendance officer, but he did explain to me very briefly. That if I were to try to excuse any of my absences, there would be a limit to it. And I believe that that is still a thing to this day. So from that day on. I have been very anxious about showing up tardy to school. To this very day, the thought of going through the doors of Chelsea High School after seven fifty sounds extremely frightening. And because of the E policy, being late to class with unexcused absences. Or just because you've had an off day and you felt like taking another route to class. People have had their grades on pending or had their grades lowered down for no reason. And whether grades were high or low on my end, I felt like my grades were being threatened. So I didn't even try to show up late to class. People who are part of curriculums like myself at Chelsea High School also are being threatened from getting those things taken away from them. I'm a president at, for the drama club at Chelsea High School and the thought of me losing that position. Because I am absent for three days or more is horrifying. So I please hope that you will take into consideration that this E policy is not a good thing. And I do not want to live in fear of ever thinking or thinking about a scenario in which I have to take a day. Or two or three off because I just genuinely have to. This means the world to me. Everything I have earned, my grades and the positions I have been put in, including curriculums, means the world to me. So please don't threaten that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, I am thankful to s- speak for the, um, for the opportunity to speak here about the E policy. My name is AJ Singh and I am a senior at Chelsea High School. I would like to talk about a specific way that I think this E policy fails to address the needs of students in the way that if forgiveness for an E is given. Concerning the E policy at face value, I understand that there's a perceived value behind having disciplinary action behind missing school. I can also understand where that perceived value potentially comes from as there is definitely a problem to be found with students either. Um, missing school or missing classes in particular. However, a specific way that I think this policy as written fails to fulfill its motivation is in the second half of semester classes. And in the fourth, fourth quarter, E grades are final. This logistical, logistical decision of this policy seems to miss the point of being able to forgive, forgive absences in the E grades in the first place. Students' lives are very complicated and complications that can affect their school time related to mental health, home, and whatever case by case, case situation. May, it, it could be for them to miss school at any point, exist at any point in the year in, year in Chelsea High School, no matter what grade they're in. This lack of leniency in, in this fashion is thus a contradiction to the policy's goal of getting students back in school and on track because of the arbitrary way. Forgiveness for E's can even be granted. I would like the school board to consider a change in the, to the E policy in the way that forgiveness can be granted to. In any quarter, into any class because students deserve a policy that they could point you to and say that makes sense. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I will be reading two testimonies. So I will be reading mine first. Good evening. My name is Giselle Rodriguez. I'm a junior and vice president of twenty twenty-four and member of National Honor Society. The E policy is a topic all of us are passionate about reforming. Thank you for having us and giving us a voice. There are many problems regarding the E policy. I'm going to focus on one of the most fundamental parts of the attendance method. And that is the problem with how attendance is getting taken every day by teachers. Attendance is an indicator of a student engagement and academic success. Therefore, higher education institutions should track absences in real time. However, there is no current clear system for teachers to take attendance every day. Sometimes there are students who are with a counselor or social worker at school regarding mental health, family problems, et cetera. However, there is no communication with the student's current class teacher to tell them that they're absent for a valid reason. So their absent is not excused and will not be further excused. Another incident would be when a teacher couldn't take attendance for a month during the beginning of a school year. And nonetheless, one of those students that she had in her class actually belonged in another class that was required. Sorry. So the student missed a whole month of a required class. In addition, when teachers are absent and there are substitutes present, it is clear, it is not clear who put attendance that day. As a result of this, it is unclear if the attendance for a certain day is actually accurate. Or if it is credible because the system doesn't say who put the attendance in or if a student was with a counselor or social worker. Chelsea High wants to build a bridge to success for students, but how are we doing that if we're implementing the E policy? Which is strict and punitive when we don't know if the attendance is a hundred percent accurate. Many students also don't know how to check their attendance, so this makes it even harder. We propose a system for school staff to put in accurate attendance, communication between staff members when students are at a counselor or social worker's office. And an easier way for students to locate their current absences. As we look into reforming this policy, we need to look at the crucial first steps and it is this. Thank you. I would also like to read be, on behalf of a student who couldn't make it. Hello, my name is Lamari Davis. I would like to tell you a little part about how the E policy affected me and why it should be changed. Back in twenty fifteen, my mother had a stroke and my sister took guardianship of me. During the weekday on special occasions, my sister sometimes takes me to go visit her. And from those days that I've missed to go see my mother, I've gotten the E policy, which is very infuriating. Undoubtedly, of course, this is upsetting. I'm getting my grades stripped away because I'm going to visit my mom, not because I'm skipping class or anything. Apart from this, the E policy isn't just punishing troubled kids, but punishing people who work hard for the grade. And just isn't fair and that's why the policy should be changed. Thank you.
Good evening. Judith Garcia, Chelsea City Councilor for District Five. I am here today to support the students that are here. That have taken an enormous amount of courage to share their personal stories of how this policy has failed them and affected them. So I am here to say as school committee members, I ask you. Many of you who have advocated so much for mental health services and expanding and bettering our schools. Take a moment to really listen to these stories, but actually take action upon it. Because it takes a lot of courage to come up here and speak, not only to share their personal stories. But to speak on behalf of hundreds of other students who couldn't be here tonight. But they're here because they believe and they know in the power of organizing. But they're here because they believe and they know in the power of organizing and really fighting for something that is affecting them, but not only them, affecting other students and their peers in ways that are unfathomable. So I'm here because I will always continue to support them. I am inspired by them. I've had the opportunity to work alongside them and hear them, notice an injustice and actually take action. So we applaud you, I applaud you, and I hope that you all take action because this is a failed policy that's having a direct impact. So look at different holistic measures of how you can improve something to make sure that our students are really thriving in their education and that we're not punishing them. So thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Marino. I'm a junior at Chelsea High School and the president of the class of twenty twenty-four. I'm also a member of National Honor Society. I am here today to ask for your help. Over the past few years, the E policy has been in place to maintain and increase student attendance at Chelsea High School. The policy is exclusive to only Chelsea High School. However, this policy has brought many challenges for our classmates, your students. The E policy is a system put in place to penalize a student who accrues three or more absences. The consequences of accruing three absences result in an E equivalent to a sixty as a grade. This is the case even for students who turned in all their work and probably secured an A despite the absences. The policy does not motivate students to miss less classes, but instead discouraging them from even trying. Not to mention this policy is not accounting for COVID, which we all know can put anybody out of it for more than three days. We know that COVID can still claim the lives of loved ones, requiring immediate response for wakes and bureaus. These are the things that our high-risk population of students have to deal with on top of being a student. The E policy should be restructured to meet the needs of students, parents and faculty members. Some schools such as Malden and Boston prioritize the student well-being by excusing mental health days and having more than three unexcused absences. For example, Malden High has five unexcused absences while Boston Public Schools has eight per quarter. They also have more flexibility in regards to lowering student grades due to the high unexcused absences. And Malden High, the school notifies parents and guardians where there's an excess absences of a student and makes reasonable effort to meet with them to develop action plans to improve student attendance. I have passed on a petition. There are over two hundred and thirty signatures on this petition calling for the E policy to be revised and more equitable to all students. This petition has been signed by students, parents, faculty, alumni and members of the community. This shows that many people feel that we can improve on our attendance E policy. We need the help of our elected school board members and we know our superintendent will work on us because we depend on you for our success. We want to prioritize our education. If changes aren't made within the first quarter, the E policy should be paused. Until there is an adequate time to review and revise this policy. We all agree coming to school is important, but we shouldn't ruin students' dreams by punitive policies by this punitive E policy that has little regard of targeting the root of the attendance problem. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I do have one to read that was sent in. So I have a statement from Manuel Tesh from one seventy-five Washington Ave. Letter in support of pausing, reviewing and updating the E policy. As an alumni of Chelsea High School and a member of this community, I am ready in support of reviewing the E policy and updating it to better serve our community. Although the purpose of the E policy is to increase attendance and student overall engagement, there needs to be a system in place for the policy to be reviewed periodically with the input of students, parents and teachers. Chelsea is a community made up of so many different cultures and languages as well as a variety of different families, family structures that can sometimes have an effect on a child's learning. For instance, responsibilities outside of school can really take a toll on the ability of a student to attend class. As a community, community with a high population and the lower socioeconomic status, students face more responsibilities than school alone. I remember myself, I had multiple jobs outside of school and I did my best to be involved in extracurriculars. There were multiple occasions where those jobs interfered with my ability to be in school, but they were necessary as I had to assist my family financially. However, school was also my only opportunity to overcome those financial burdens and give my family better living conditions. It is for this reason that they, that the way we operate schools is the most crucial as we are in fact, in fact structuring success for our future Chelsea leaders. We must all come together in larger conversations that take serious, take seriously the input of students who are being affected by policies that affect their future opportunities. I am confident that the current leaders of Chelsea Public Schools, including the superintendent and school committee elected officials, will work together to make our students the, our best served and best prepared for success as they have always done so in the past.
That was it. Oh, thank you, Ironika. To the members of the audience, we see you and we hear you. Time and time again, you know, I've been on the board for eight years now and the most drastic changes that have occurred were because of their, of our youth. And while many of you may not remember the classes before you, I do because they stood right before me in this very room and advocated for change. And so I want you, I want to ensure each and every one of you that we appear, we see you and we hear you and we will work alongside you to make amends, make amendments, to make the changes that we need to make sure that you all feel successful, you feel heard and you find comfort in the school that you attend. Before I continue, I want to go over a list of changes that we've done that has been brought by classes before you. So if you remember, just snap it. And I know Ms. Asher in the back knows a lot about these changes. The youth advocated for outdoor graduation and we got it. We did it, right? Why? Because the class before, the classes before you advocated for that and attended meetings after meeting, advocated and went to city council meetings and again advocated for more funding. The saving of the French department. For those of you who remember back in the day, every year we would experience budget cuts. And youth before you came to our meeting at the Williams Bandroom and, and went on the mic and shared, we need to have more language, language departments, right, aside from Spanish. And guess what we did? We saved the French department because of your advocacy in the classes before you. Replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day was a humongous change that we did here and that is because of your advocacy. Students came up to that mic and they spoke from the heart and they shared how important it was for us to celebrate our people and to celebrate the true story of what happened on that day. Many students came up here multiple years after years and advocated for a more diverse staff. So what did we do? We started being innovative and created ways to increase our staff, not only in the classroom, but as administrators. And I'm proud to say that we went from a school district that had zero percent admin of color to now thirty percent. And Ms. Lee, if you're in the room, is that still correct? Thirty percent? Yes. And so again, that's a true testament of we hear, we're listening and we're working alongside with you, never against you. Okay, so my ask is that you continue to hold us accountable, you continue to show up, speak your mind because we are listening and we will continue to listen. So thank you for being courageous. What I see in front of me are, is a group of courageous leaders, fierce advocates, agents of change and we welcome that. We love that, right? We are so excited to work with you. This is our first meeting and it's already like my adrenaline is like, yes, this is what I'm here for. This is what we are here for. We are here to serve you. We are a school board that listens and engages in conversations. And so with that, before I move on to the next agenda item, I want you to know that the administration at, here on the school board and at Chelsea High will be holding focus groups and will be working with you to again, listen and to amend this policy. Sounds good? Yes. Were you first though? I wasn't.
Well, I was just gonna make a motion to table any further conversation on the E policy and then we move it to the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Meeting so we could invite our new high school principal to hear his thoughts and then from there we could work and then inviting other stakeholders and students to work on something.
Thank you, Ms. Villas. That's an awesome idea. Consider it done. Mr. Jimenez, go ahead.
This is coming up again because, you know, I, I appreciate the sentiment that we are a body that, that listens, but this is actually the second time that this is coming up. We had conversations about this in a subcommittee last year or a couple of years ago. I forget exactly when it was, you know, and those conversations, the concerns were brought forward. And kind of my opinion of the situation was that it wasn't actually discussed as much as we should have. And, and I think that it is, it's clear that we should have discussed it further back then. So I, I think that I, I agree with the idea of moving it to a subcommittee. I want to make sure that when we have that subcommittee, we actually have data on the E policy, who is being affected, how many people, what are the alternatives, as Ms. Asher outlined, right? We know that there are districts that are doing this differently. I don't want to just have a focus group and listen to the students, right? They already came and they, they've told us, right? Like focus groups are just gonna show more of this. I want to make sure that we're actually having conversations around what are the alternatives to make sure that we actually can come up with solutions and make sure that we can move something forward. Cause you know, this is not to be, not supposed to be a punitive policy, but it's being punitive, right? We can see the damage that's being done on students. And, and I want to make sure that we're exploring, how can we allow educators to use their expertise to support students to make sure that there's flexibility? Cause if, you know, the students themselves don't know whether they have an E, the educators don't know, right? Who knows? How do we make sure that we have an integrated system so that everybody can support attendance being transparent and accurate? And then on top of that, making sure that we're not harming students who are otherwise doing perfectly well in school because of the impact of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. I do want to remind those who are present that even though we did have a subcommittee on it, we did respond and we did waive the E policy. And Dr. Abada can speak on that. And so again, to reiterate, even though we have talked about it, we did respond and clearly it wasn't enough. And that's, and that's what this meeting, these meetings are for, is for us to listen and to hear and to respond. And so we are responding. Awesome. See, I make a motion to close up our public comment section.
I second the motion.
Awesome. Beautiful. So I will now, I see a lot of our youth leaving up. Thank you so much for coming. Have a great school day tomorrow. I think it's closed. No school tomorrow. No school. Enjoy your Friday and Monday. We will see you on Tuesday. I have school tomorrow. We have school, right? Katia and Ms. Cavanagh. Good night, everyone. I know, school committee members, we, let's take a quick three-minute recess. I'll put the timer. And we'll be back in three minutes. Alrighty, let's get back to business, y'all. Alrighty, let's get back to business. I will now turn it over to our superintendent to share out the reports of our schools.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for all that are here and all that are listening. We started school on Wednesday and it was a fabulous start. Our students in grades one through twelve came to school and we had over six thousand, we have six thousand one hundred and thirty-one students enrolled in our Chelsea Public Schools. And so we're excited to be full. We welcomed many students and many new staff and administrators. And so with that, what I would like to do is introduce some of our new staff that we have here at Central Office and at our schools because I just want everyone to know who we have on our staff. So I'm gonna go ahead and start off with Central Office. New to our Central Office, we have our Director of Curriculum Instruction Mentor Lead Program, Matt Messina. He, Matt Messina has worked in Chelsea Public Schools for fifteen years. He's not here tonight and couldn't make it. But he's been a math teacher and a coach at the Brown and the Wright and he's also been a summer and after-school site supervisor. So he will now be a Director of Curriculum Instruction. We also have a Director of Curriculum, another Director of Curriculum Instruction, Christina De Calgero. She has over twenty years of experience in public education. Christina started her educational career in Chelsea in two thousand and one. And she, throughout her thirteen years in Chelsea, she served as a parent. And she, throughout her thirteen years in Chelsea, she served as a paraprofessional, a teacher, a lead mentor teacher, a lead member of the district curriculum instructional team, and the math instructional team. And then next, we have an Assistant Director of Multilingual Learners, Maureen Hughes. She is not able to be with us tonight, but Maureen joins Chelsea Public Schools with a commitment to improving educational outcomes for students and multilingual learners. And as a multilingual learner herself, Maureen grew up in Europe and in the United States. And in the past five years, she has been the UNINOS Dual Language Development Specialist in the Somerville Public Schools. So we welcome Maureen. And then we have Ms. Alexandra Sanchez. She is a Boston native, and Alex is here tonight. She attended Boston Public Schools until the age of eight, and her family then relocated to Brookline, Massachusetts. This change of environment would later fuel her desire to pursue a career in education, specifically urban education. She earned her undergraduate degree from Boston College in Applied Psychology and Human Development. She minored in Philosophy and Sociology, and immediately after, she became a Donovan Urban Teacher Scholar at Boston College to earn her Master's in Early Childhood Education. She worked at the Williams Russell Elementary in multiple early childhood classrooms. She, her most fulfilling role has been teaching in sheltered English immersion. So Alex also attended, is a graduate of the Pronunciser Institute of Creative Leadership, and her goal is to create a vision for education in which all students are given equal access to learning opportunities. So welcome, Alex. And our next person is our Director of the REACH Program, Yanariz Colado, and she is, oh, there she is. So Ms. Colado will serve as our Director of the REACH Program. She was born and raised in Lawrence, Massachusetts. She holds a Bachelor's Degree in Science with a concentration in Public Relations and Sociology from Salem State University, and a Master's in English from the Bradlow School of English at Middlebury College. Yanariz identifies as a poet and believes in spoken word poetry that has led her professional journey. She is a former Network Coordinator of Phillips Academy and over Bradlow, where she organized social justice and literacy programming for the city of Lawrence and the greater Boston area. She works closely with the national networks such as the Bradlow Teacher Network and the Middlebury College Next Gen Youth Advisory. Yanariz has worked for the city of Chelsea since 2014, where she started as a REACH Group Leader in ninth grade. She has served as a paraprofessional at the Sokoloski and created the Literacy Through Hip-Hop Curriculum for REACH. She helped publish Listen, a book of poems from the REACH Program in 2019. So welcome. We're grateful to have you. And then we have our lead, our Social Work Coordinator, Brenda Peña, who is with us tonight. Welcome, Ms. Peña. Brenda began her career in Chelsea in the field of human services, working at Roca and the Chelsea Collaborative. She transferred to education in 2006 and began her career as a school adjustment counselor. She provided social-emotional support as a school adjustment counselor for eight years at the Walton Public Schools. Ms. Peña served as a resource and supported students with transitions, emotional struggles, peer interpersonal difficulties, and academic stressors. Her focus was to support all students' social-emotional needs in addition to providing referrals and support and accessing community resources. In 2014, she took her first leadership position as Head of Family and Community Engagement, Dean of Students with Bentley Academy in Salem, Massachusetts. And in that role, she worked closely with internal and external stakeholders to plan, implement, and monitor the school's improvement and turnaround efforts. Peña was one of the founding members of the Bentley, a school that achieved Level One status in 2017. And most recently, she was Principal of Walton High School. So, welcome to the Chelsea community, Ms. Peña. Oh, she also, let me go over her education, her background. She holds a Bachelor's of Social Work from Waylon College and a Master's in Social Work from Boston College, and has completed coursework and educational leadership through the University of New England. So welcome. Okay, and then our Coordinator of College and Career Readiness, Ms. Wesley Pierre, and she is present. Welcome. What, wait, I know you go by Wes. So Wes is a Somerville native and of Haitian background. She has several years of experience creating and directing programs around creating access and unique opportunities for students to experience all of the amazing resources Boston has to offer. Wes ran a summer academy for several years, where students took daily field trips and engaged in rigorous project-based learning around her experiences. Most recently, Wes served as an instructional coach, supporting teachers in Boston and Everett Public Schools. And as an instructional coach, Wes prioritized forming thoughtful partnerships and making connections within and across communities to assure students and teachers had equitable access to resources to support their growth and development academically and socially emotionally. Wes believes that all students with the right supports and learned confidence can impact spaces well beyond the boundaries of their own neighborhoods. Wes attended Emmanuel College, where she received a Bachelor's in Psychology, followed by a Master's of Curriculum and Teaching from Boston University. Welcome, Wes. So that is our new District Central Office Administrator. So welcome. If you guys don't want to stand, want to stand. We welcome you.
Don't be shy. Don't be shy. Yeah.
Okay. So for our school administrators, we have two tonight with us. We have our new Principal of Chelsea High School, Mr. Obed Morales. Welcome. Mr. Morales will serve as Principal of Chelsea High School. Mr. Morales was Principal of East Somerville, K-8, and Somerville. This is his twenty-fourth year in the field of education and fourth year as a principal. Prior to Somerville, he served as Assistant Principal for nine years in several schools. He also has twelve years of teaching experience in math and middle grades at high school level. He earned a Master's of Education with a major in Educational Leadership from the Florida Gulf Coast University and a Bachelor of Science in Mathematics and Computer Science on St. Peters College in New Jersey. On a personal level, he is most proud of his family. He and his wife have been married for thirty years. They are proud parents of two amazing adults. Similarly, his family is the center of his life, and he will work to continue the legacy of success established at Chelsea High School by building strong relationships with teachers, staff, students, families, and community partners. So welcome, Mr. Morales. And then we have our Brown Middle School Principal, Mr. Adam Willdie. Welcome, Mr. Willdie. Principal Willdie now. Mr. Willdie will serve as Principal of the Brown Middle School. He was an Assistant Principal, an interim principal at the Wright Middle School since he joined Chelsea Public Schools. As part of the Wright team, he has led many initiatives that have helped contribute to the school's growth, both academically and culturally. He leads by centering relationships and connections in his work, truly valuing every student and staff member's name, strength, and story. Prior to joining the Wright, Mr. Willdie served as an Acting Assistant Principal in Malden, a history teacher in the Belmont Public Schools, and an interim history teacher and paraprofessional in the Arlington Public Schools. He earned his Bachelor's of Arts in History in American Studies and a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Tufts University, and a Certificate of Advanced Graduate Study and Educational Leadership from the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. As a Malden resident, Adam is a passionate advocate for public education and an active member of his community, serving in his fifth term as an elected member of the Malden School Committee. So welcome, Mr. Willdie, to, to the Brown. You are now a Bulldog. And so I'm gonna go ahead, our other Assistant Principals are not here tonight, but we welcome Christine Keenan to Chelsea High School as a, the new Assistant Principal at the Wright. And we also are welcoming Priscilla Aravalo as a new Assistant Principal at Chelsea High School. And we welcome Alan Bosley as the Chelsea High School Assistant Principal, and Crystal Dixon as the Evaluation Team Lead. So, as our special, in special education. So that is all. So welcome to all of our school-based and Central Office Administrators.
Welcome aboard and welcome to the Chelsea family. Bienvenida a la familia de nuestra ciudad chiquitita pero poderosa y bella, Chelsea. Awesome.
Okay. So now I will turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching Learning, Mr. Levato, to go over our indicators of success. We do have a lot of indicators for tonight because we are doing base, our end-of-year indicators as well, and we have data. So, turning it over.
Thank you, Dr. Abeda, and thank you, School Committee. So we're gonna go over the end-of-the-year updates and then also the annual updates. And there is one piece of data that the state has still not released. The state has still not released the final results for the MCAS, so the only thing we do have is the item analysis. So we will not be prepared to be able to present that, but as they'll release, I'm sure I'll follow Dr. Abeda's guidance and we'll update it as we have. So I'm gonna jump ahead. So the end of the year on Priority One. I do want to point out AP courses. We had a small dip. Beginning of the year, we started at about 255, ended at the end of the year at 236. That's not uncommon, although we need to continue to monitor to ensure that we're not losing any of our kids. Calculus courses, we went from 138 to 121. We had significant increases in the students entering early college courses. We started at 214. At the end of the year, we increased almost about a hundred students. So we went from 214 to 303. Big changes. Oh, they're just excited. My high school mic got ready to go. The, the students in dual enrollment, again, significant changes there. We went from fifty-two to three hundred and ten, which is also up from the previous year as well. So part of that is due to COVID on some of the struggles. So the change itself is not, there's a couple of factors within that. Eye-ready progress monitoring. I want to be able to point out that, just so nobody's getting confused on it, the, what we're showing is grade level. And so we had significant growth across the district in regards to level changes. But what we're showing here is only at achieving that grade level. Kindergarten, we started the year at eight percent. By the end of the year, we were at forty-seven percent grade level. So significant growth. Grade one, we started at five percent, ended at thirty-two percent. Grade two, we started at eight percent, thirty-four percent. Grade three, we went from twenty-four to forty-six. Grade four, fifteen to twenty-nine. Grade five, ten to seventeen. Sixth grade, thirteen to twenty-one. Seventh, seventh grade, seventeen to twenty-two. Eighth grade, seventeen to twenty-five. And again, this is an ELA. And once again, this is students meeting grade level with the standards, not students' growth. We had significant growth across the board as well, but again, this is grade level achievement. In the area of math, five to thirty-two for kindergarten. First grade is two to twenty-five. Grade two, one to twenty. Grade three, four to thirty. Grade four, six through thirty-six. Grade five, eight to sixteen. Grade six, ten to twenty-six. Seven, ten to twenty, eight to sixteen. And again, just to point it out, we were out of school the year before, so we're pretty excited about the growth that we are seeing as that's, we're trying to catch up from the year before as well. In regards to Indicator Five, students exiting grade four, just as a reminder, what we are looking at here is not just the grade level. Now we're looking at standards-based achievement. So it's a little bit different than just the grade itself. We finished off the year with fifty-one percent in the area of reading, meeting standards. So again, that's celebrating meeting the standards, not an artificial A, B, C, D grade. Writing, we're at thirty-seven percent. Math, fifty-nine percent. Science is sixty-two percent. In grade six, which is again, this is the letter grade, we, ELA, we were at seventy-five percent. Writing, seventy-one percent. Math, seventy-one percent. And then science, seventy-five percent, finishing off the year. And I believe that's the last one. Am I missing something down that, Veronica? No, I think that's it. And then we go, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lee, unless Dr. Abeda or the committee has any questions or something else.
Good evening, School Committee. So here's the data for our retention, our Indicator Eleven, Priority Three. You can see in twenty-one, twenty-two, we added many positions as a result of SOA. And so you could see, we went from five hundred and four staff from the previous year to six hundred and one. And so we had some exits. We saw that people coming out of the pandemic, they were more likely to stay. And so our retention rates were a little more stable, but this past year, we saw a lot of movement due to personal reasons and very, a variety of reasons. So we had about twenty-one percent of staff leave CPS. And you could see the other data on this chart right here. In terms of our school-based administrators, we did add a new administrator at CVLA with our virtual school opening. And you could see, we did have a little movement in our administrators as well. We had the same percentage, six administrators leaving Chelsea Public Schools. And in terms of promotions, we are continuing to work on promoting our paraprofessional staff in our TPP program. And so you could see that we've had an additional eight teachers who were promoted to, paraprofessionals who are promoted to teachers. We had two teachers promoted to administrators last year. We had an administrator promoted from their current role to an administrative position. And we did have a substitute paraprofessional go into a paraprofessional role. So a total of twelve promotions in twenty-one, twenty-two. The percentage of diversity for teachers and administrators is still being worked on as we get our final data. So we'll present that at the next School Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I would like to say that we started off the school year with ninety percent of our position, ninety-four percent of our teacher and educator positions filled. So that means that almost the majority of all of our students started off the school year with a teacher in front of them. So despite the worker shortages and the competition, our administrators, our HR department payroll worked extremely hard to fill all summer long. So we have teachers in front of our students day one. And we know that when we have a highly qualified teacher in front of our students, that means that they are going to be receiving a high standard of education. So we're excited about that. But I want to thank all of our administrators, our HR department, our Business Department for their efforts this summer, because they worked all summer. And so a huge applause to you. And so with that, and it's so important because the research shows us that when we hire early, we really do have a greater impact on teaching and learning. So I'm very excited about that. So thank you. Okay, so we will go on to my, our regular, the personal update and enrollment. So give me a moment to comb through. So, here we go. I'm used to doing this over the computer, and you can just scroll down. Okay, so with, you can see, and enclosure B, our personnel changes, and we had a lot because it was summertime. So our demographic data is we hired sixty percent Caucasian, thirty-two percent Hispanic, six percent Black, and two percent Asian Pacific Islander. For our resignations and retirements, you can look through. Of course, you're gonna see more than normal because this was at the end of the year. And you'll see more promotions and transfers as well. And so you can take a look through that. So I would like to commend that report for the record. And then for enrollment, and I know, Mr. Jimenez, I always think of you when I do this report, but we are starting the school year with six thousand. but we are starting the school year with 6,131 students. Um, this can move a little bit this month, so we'll, in October, we'll really get a true number. So, we're in a really good place, so I'd like to commend this report for the record as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Beata. Thank you, uh, Mr. Lovato and Ms. Lee for your reports. Do I have a motion to commend the committee reports to the record?
Motion to, maybe second the motion.
Wonderful. Alrighty, team, next up, we have new business. Consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for multiple annual federal grants for school year 2022 through 2023 in the amount of $5,601,148. Explanation: CPS is eligible for certain federal grants available to provide support and supplemental services for certain school populations. Each year, the district's adopted budget includes an anticipated amount for each grant. However, the exact amount awarded is not known typically until the fall. The purpose of this action is for the School Committee to accept those award amounts that vary from the adopted budget. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept the award, awarded allocations for multiple annual federal grants for school year 2022 to 2023 in the amount of $5,601,148. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
The motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for the Adult Education Services SEL and Mental Health and Comprehensive School Health Services State Grants for school year 2022, 2023 in a total of 94, 90, sorry, 94. Oh, Dios mio, 945,835 dollars. Sorry, team, I'm a bit rusty. It's our first meeting. Um, explanation: The district has received continued funding for Adult Education Services, SEL, and Mental Health in the fourth and final year of the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. Funding is provided for the cost of staff, professional development, grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, and technology. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for the Adult Education Services SEL and Mental Health and Comprehensive School Health Services State Grants for school year 22 to 23 in a total of $945,835. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
The motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept the awarded allocation from TESI for the Civics Teaching and Learning Grants for school year 2022, 2023. Explanation: This competitive grant supports civics teaching and learning, including implementation of Grade Eight and High School civics projects, which are required by law. The funds can be used to pay stipends for professional development and costs associated with civics learning experiences, such as field trips that are designed to enrich core curricular learning in any grade level. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept the awarded allocation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Civics Teaching and Learning Grants for school year 22, 23. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
The motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action. A private grant awards for the Barr Foundation and Chelsea Educational Foundation in the amount of $465,000 for school year 2022 through 2023. Explanation: This year, the district has received a new three-year grant award from the Barr Foundation for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. The funds will be used to create a new coach-teacher position, as well as for stipends, contract services, travel, supplies, and other expenses in support of the program. The ILP has received funds for the Rucheski Foundation? Sorry. That will be used for stipends, student assistance, supplies, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept private, private grant awards from the Barr Foundation and Chelsea Education Foundation in the amount of $465,000 for school year 22 to 23. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
The motion carries. Consideration and action to accept a grant in the amount of $4,714.29 from CAST to support early adopters teams engaged in implementing universal design for learning. Explanation: CAST is a nonprofit education research and development organization that created the universal design for learning framework and guidelines, now used across the world wide. Funds have been awarded to support early adopter teams at Chelsea High School and at the elementary school complex. The funds can be used for materials, substitute coverage, stipends, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept a grant in the amount of $4,714.29 from CAST to support early adopters teams engaged in implementing universal design for learning. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
The motion carries. Lastly, we have consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and amend the 2022, 2023 school budget to increase funding from $118,236,617 to $118,375,333 and amend the program budgets as identified. Explanation: Per the city charter, each year, the School Committee must submit to the City Council a budget based upon the Governor's proposal prepared in January. That means that if the state legislator adopts a different figure, a budget revision is needed. For fiscal year 2023, the district will receive an increase of $138,717. The Superintendent recommends these funds be allocated to district administration to support three existing parent liaison positions that must be moved from grant funds to the general fund this year. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and amend the 2022, 2023 school budget to increase funding from $118,236,000 to $118,375,333 and amend the program budgets as identified. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabit?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
The motion carries. Are there any announcements? Mr. O'Regan?
On Saturday, July, excuse me, September 17th, from 12 to 4, Chelsea Day will be going on downtown. And at, uh, on Saturday, September 24th, the Chelsea Coonanis Club will be holding the annual track and field day from 9:30 to 12 o'clock down the Burke Complex.
Thank you, Mr. O'Regan. Any other?
What time was that at? The track and field?
Uh, 9:30 to 12 o'clock.
Thank you.
And on Chelsea Day from 12 to 4, I'll be at somewhere down there running a dunk tank. So, if anybody wants to volunteer to get in their dunk tank.
That should be fun. Thank you, Mr. O'Regan.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Sure, Ms. Cabral, go ahead.
I just wanted to share, um, thank you to all the students and community members that shared, um, their artwork, um, and their writing at the Poetry Walk, um, this past week. Um, I think it's important to continue to showcase the artists that we have within our district. And so, I just want to highlight if anybody didn't get the chance to check out the Poetry Walk, um, this past weekend, um, I encourage you to check it out next year as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. Mr. Jimenez?
Just really quickly, want to thank all of the staff, uh, both the ones present here as well as everybody else who helped with all the back-to-school events. Um, they were all, the pictures looked amazing. I heard really great things from all the folks, um, who attended, so, uh, thank you all so much for all the great work you did. And, uh, best of luck with the rest of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Anyone else? Oh, yeah, as I'm, yeah, and as a friendly reminder, no school tomorrow or Monday. I have school, so I will enjoy Monday. Team, um, for my closing remarks, as excited and happy as I was to see this room full of our youth advocating, I was disheartened to receive a message from a youth saying that one of our School Committee members went outside and shared, "They will try to minimize you." I just want to remind us that we work as a collective body and that mobilizing our students or putting a negative thought in their mind isn't healthy, especially when that is not our intention. We do not minimize our students. We give every inch and every minute of our day to give back to our community and to our students. And to say that is completely uncalled for. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Meeting adjourned.